Steve is here, so we are... No, no problem. So we are back. Move on to the next... Moving on to the next item, which is Agenda 2.
So we have item number two. Owner applicant, Safar Erfan, PLN 201800397. Location Cortez Avenue in Miramar.
Good morning, Honorable Members of the Planning Commission. Dennis Aguirre, as usual, project planner for this project. I have before you a proposal to build a single-family residence in Miramar, in the uncorated San Mateo County area of Miramar. And this is located in the S-94, R1 S-94 CD/DR district, and is located within the coastal... I'm sorry. Seating corridor, I'm sorry. It's in the seating corridor. And it is located west of Cabrillo Highway. The lot size is 4,400 square feet, and that's why it requires a non-conforming use permit because of that. And also, the applicant is requesting reduced setbacks of seven feet on each side, which I'll further clarify later on with graphics, where the minimum required for S-94 is 10 feet per side. Also, as you can see there, that it is located about 200 feet from Cabrillo Highway. And based on that distance, it mitigates any visual impacts from the freeway. Also, the development further west and along Marada Road near the ocean also further mitigates any negative impacts from Marada. The topo map shows you the size of the parcel relative to the other parcels. The next parcel west of that is a conforming parcel, and which is larger than the 4,400 square feet that the subject parcel is sized at. We have the site plan before you, and I've actually rotated it and blown it up to give you a better, you know, view of what's being proposed. We have compliant setbacks in front of 20 feet, and the rear, which is more than 36 feet. The setbacks on the side, it's really not a continuous seven-foot setback. Both sides, in the front part, the applicant is requesting seven feet. But as you go further in, you see that at the ground floor, we have 13 feet of setback, and on the other side is, I believe, eight feet. On the upper floor, there's a protrusion that maintains a 10-foot setback on the left side and a 7-foot setback on the right side. So the 7-foot setback is really not the continuous all along the structure there. The lots, lot coverage and FAR are compliant. Lot coverage is under the 30, maximum 30 percent, and the FAR is up to the maximum allowed of 48 percent. The... Also, the requirements for water and sewer services are available, and the water transfer rights have been approved by CCWD. And a variance for the sewer was approved by Coronado Community Sanitary District, so the project complies with the required service connections. We have the drainage plans. And thank you, Commissioner Ketchum, for catching this. I think there was a discrepancy with the front stair draft, drafting error there because, if you can see, relative to the difference between this and the grading plan, the front stairways are protruding into the side setback. And that is an error which will be corrected at the building stage. This is the correct site plan and illustration of where the stairs are. Okay. Landscaping complies also with the proposed species to be drought tolerant and non-invasive. And shrubs and small trees have been proposed. See, the Coastside Design Review Committee reviewed this and recommended approval based on the adequate landscaping that will buffer any visual impacts from Cabrillo Highway or the neighboring areas. Okay. Just to give you a better view of the proposed landscaping, and it's... I rotated it just to expand the view of the proposed landscaping. As you can see with this floor plan, ground floor maintains the different setbacks of seven feet in front and 13 feet at the rear for the left side, and seven feet and eight feet along the right side. On the second floor, though, the protrusions reduce the setback upstairs. The seven feet is maintained, but the protrusion on that upper portion where the closet is, that has a 10-foot setback from the property line on the left side. And that small protrusion up there also maintains the eight-foot setback on the second floor. There is access to a deck, and it's going to be accessed by the spiral staircase, which I'll show you the roof deck plan later on. Elevation show a shed roof with combined materials of stucco and siding from, as you can see there, with colors that were originally darker. But through the three iterations of the three Coastside Design Review meetings, the Design Review Committee felt that the proposed darker colors were too dark, so they were able to recommend approval for lighter colors, which are gray in tone. Other elevation illustrations also indicating that the combination of materials proposed. And this is the roof deck. I think there was a concern from the neighbor to the west that there was going to be impact to their privacy. But you can see the roof deck through a couple of iterations through the... With, you know, relative to the meetings, they were... The applicant was able to come up with a roof deck that really mitigated the privacy issue. That upper portion, as you can see there, is really a roof... A deck surrounded by a wall, which is up to about 4 feet 11 in height, so the impact is not going to be there. There is not going to be an open visual impact from that deck. The section also shows you the relationship from the outside to the inside. The entry staircase, as you can see there, leads up to the first floor, to the second floor, and with access, with the other stairs accessing the lower floor. And exterior lights are very minimal. They are dark sky downward directed. What's required as a condition from the fire department is an extension of Cortez Avenue to accommodate the fire turnaround. And that's what is being proposed, is a road extension of 60 feet towards eastward to accommodate that fire requirement. More photos to show you that extension. So with that, this graphic, this table shows you compliance with the zoning standards for S-94, except for the proposed substandard setbacks. The heights are under 28 feet maximum. Two parking spaces are proposed as required. And the front rear setbacks also comply, together with the lot coverage and floor area numbers. Some photos to show you. The story poles were installed during the design review stage. And you can see the impacts there relative to the surrounding area and the next-door neighbor. The project is categorically set from CEQA, based on Section 15303, Class 3, for a single-family residence. And Seth has determined that there are findings to approve, use permit findings to approve the project. And it is compliant with general plan policies, the LCP zoning regulations, parking, and coastside DR standards. So with that, Seth is recommending that the planning commission approve the non-conforming use permit, coastal development permit, and design review based on, and subject to the required findings and conditions of approval indicated in the staff report. I am open. And that ends my presentation, and I am open for questions.
Thank you, Dennis. Questions? Commissioner Ketchum?
So just to clarify, the roofing material is metal?
Yes, yes. Thank you. That was a... Yeah.
So there's been some...
Non-reflective metal roof.
There've been some metal roofs installed. Actually, there's one in West Miramar that is blindingly reflective. It could be seen all the way from Service Beach. And so there was some discussion about that these materials need to be checked or something needs to be done. There's actually another one that was glaring on Princeton Shoreline. But anyway, so has this been resolved? Has this material... Will that be... What can be done to ensure that this one as well is not reflective?
Dennis, you want to talk about the process for reviewing materials?
This was really an important issue with the Coastside Design Review Committee, and they really require a supplemental of spec sheets that indicate what kind of material and the reflectivity level of roof materials because they are very concerned with metal roofs and their reflectivity. And based on what was proposed and the cut sheets that were provided, they were really confident that the proposed material with today's technology will sort of comply with, you know, not giving out, you know, excess reflectivity. So we are, you know, we are dependent on the standards that are provided by the cut sheets from manufacturers to really reflect that. And we go from there. The same with the downward-directed dark sky lighting. We need, we require that they provide cut sheets that indicate that they are dark sky compliant.
So this is just a miracle evaluation that's supplied by the manufacturer? There's no actual taking this material out on a sunny day and angle it to see if it's reflective? Or, I mean...
I didn't do that.
No. No.
Yeah. I guess at some point, maybe we'll figure this out. Maybe this house is built, and then if it is reflective, we'll think, okay, now what do we need to do to... I mean, if the specs say this, and yet this is the effect, I guess that's the last connection that I... I'm not sure we've reached.
I think we can work on that concern. So at the building permit stage, the final building plans will be referred to the planner who reviewed the project. And as part of that review, we'll confirm it's the appropriate material. And my expectation is that the applicant would be willing to bring in a sample in conjunction with the building permit application, and we'll use that sample to conduct the analysis, see if requested.
Yeah. At the CDRC meeting, we have been... The committee has been stringent in really requesting materials to be brought in, really big samples. They're too small to be mailed out during the process of mailing out packets to the CDRC. But they have been actually stringent in asking the applicant to bring the original samples at the meeting so that they can actually review and really determine whether or not it's their appropriate for their recommendation of approval.
Just to reiterate, if I'm... The house on Magellan by the trailhead, the remodel on the Princeton Shoreline within the last few years, their specs were submitted on those roofs, and yet they are reflective. So if you could just check to see what kind of specs we're really looking for because I got a picture of what this looks like. And, yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Can I ask? Along those lines, from my personal experience in the past, prior to final, you have to submit pictures of what the final product looks like in order to get your final. Is that not happening anymore?
Yes, it happens, especially when it's specified by the conditions. So that can occur. I think maybe part of the concern may be how these materials age over time and whether or not they'll sustain if it's a coating that goes on it. I'm not entirely clear on how the review of the materials that were submitted then translates into something that looks differently. So, but, yeah. It could be with age, it could be, I don't know. Perhaps Commissioner Ketchum can let us know. Was it right away that you saw the reflectivity, or was it over time?
It was right away on Magellan, and we were told, sorry, and that over time it would get dirty and it wouldn't be so bad. And then the one on Princeton Shoreline, I don't go by there every day, but it's got to be a sunny day, and you got to be at the right angle, you know? And as you walk past different sections of the roof, just, you know, light up like a beacon. And so that's why indoors, or even on a foggy day or on a sunny day, if you're turned, you know, you may not pick it up. And, but the... But what we were told was that over time it will be less reflective, not that it would become more reflective.
I see. Well, we will continue to do our best to try and address that concern. I guess from my view of the project plans, it appears that the roof is very gently sloping. And in this case, most of the... Any reflection, if it should occur, would occur directly up. But nonetheless, we will do our best to make sure that it is truly non-reflective.
Yeah, it's definitely the pitched roofs that are the situations that... So maybe the shed roof won't be a problem. Thanks.
Just a question. What do the manufacturers of the roof provide in terms of what they have tested? What...
It really depends what manufacturer. Some have really extensive brochures. But I think it's really just the color and maybe some technical specifications as to the level of reflectivity. When they say they're non-reflective, I think that's where we start going with this. They indicate non-reflective material.
Okay. So there's no... There's either reflective, non-reflective or reflective, that's it? There's nothing in between? They do not provide any level of reflectivity?
I am not familiar with the extent. Again, it's really, it really depends on the manufacturer, and some manufacturers have more extensive detail, technical detail as to that reflectivity aspect of the material.
No, thank you, thank you. I understand. And I understand Commissioner Ketchum's concern also is it has to be tested in a real environment. It's not just the specs. Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Santa Cruz, you have a question?
Mr. Aguirre, if you can go back three slides and compare what compliance and non-compliance are, you know, when you compare the compliance versus non-compliance?
The table. The table.
Oh, the...
Yeah, that one. Yeah. Okay. On the letter being sent by the attorney of Linda Schultz, she's saying that the setbacks are supposed to be 10. And I see here. And then it says the wide, the width of the lot, 50 versus 40?
Correct, yes.
And that's what it is here, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And then also, at the very end of the letter, they're saying, and that I wasn't really clear. Maybe you, I don't know, maybe you couldn't clarify because it's not your letter. But it says, "Lot AP 048032070 has sufficient space to build a similar-sized, two-story construction without the request of reduced setback." Can you explain what they mean by that?
Well, they're saying that they can build it narrower and build a narrower lot with 10-foot setbacks. But I think what we've seen in other areas, there are two. Well, there is one in Coronado Avenue that was approved previously by the commission. It was a substandard five-foot setback, although the other side is 10 feet. So really, that's what the use permit is for. So what, you know, that letter is saying is that 10 feet is adequate to build there. But since it's a narrow, you know, it's a small lot, I think the applicant is requesting to have setbacks encroached to better make use of the parcel. And also, the, again, the seven-foot foot is not continuous. To mitigate, to, you know, to apply mitigation of mass and bulk, there are facade articulation to have a rear setback on the left side of 13 feet and 10 feet, and on the right side of eight feet.
If I could offer a broader perspective. So, yes, it's... In certain areas of the county, we have approved subdivisions that created lots that are smaller than the type of lots that we would allow to be created today. And that's the case here. The non-conformity with the building site area and the building site width is not a fault of the applicants, the property owners. That was the lot that they purchased. And our local coastal program has allowances to grant certain exceptions to typical standards if you've got a non-conforming lot. And so in this instance, the applicant has requested to not have to comply with the 10-foot standard setback because the lot is so narrow. And the issue that's being raised by the attorney is a matter of discretion and what's before you today. And that is, is this requested exception, or in this case, it's called a use permit, what is required to accommodate a reasonable use of the property? I think the applicant's perspective and the staff's perspective is if we were to require 10-foot setbacks on both sides, it would render the home so small that they wouldn't be able to realize reasonable enjoyment out of it. And that's why we're in favor of supporting the Design Review Commission's recommendation that they have made appropriate effort to be sensitive to design standards, but also that some encroachment into the typical 10-foot setback, given the narrowness of the lot, is a reasonable request.
And then, one more question that I have. On the decks, on the deck, high, did you say? How high is the deck that... Because they're saying that it will intrude in the privacy of the neighbor. So when you stand up, you won't be able to see the neighbor? Is that what you...
Almost up to five feet. So it's a really good mitigation measure. Whereas if it was lower or was it open with railings, you can really see, you know, the privacy issue is now mitigated. But this one, what the owner has really proposes is to build up a wall up to about five feet so that, you know, when you're sitting down, you're really not seeing out there. As opposed to if you have a, if you had a roof deck with only railings, then you wouldn't have that buffer at all.
But that also, if I understand correctly, that only protects their privacy from the neighborhood because they're still going to be able to see the neighborhood? Because if the rail is up to here, they will be able to see the neighborhood, but the neighbor won't be able to see them because they're protected.
Also, what was determined is because there, you know, the wall of the neighboring structure, there are no windows. I mean, it's really pretty much blank, so there is no real impact on privacy because there are really no windows at all. I think what the concern of the neighbor is that they're seeing further beyond that into the backyard. And I think that's really... It goes both ways, really. And also, the roof deck complies with the design standards where the roof deck is actually integrated into the roof structure very, very well.
Okay, thank you.
I can see the challenge in trying to meet the side setbacks. But my bigger concern is it's not seven feet or eight feet. The next permit or non-conforming use permit that comes along, they assume that they can start with seven feet on each side. It's... What I'm getting at is more a precedence that we set by allowing them to request for these changes, non-conforming changes.
So my response to that would be that the precedent has already been set, and it's provided for in our regulation. And that is that our rules allow for certain exceptions to address the challenges of non-conforming lots. And every review of a non-conforming use permit is case-specific, depending on a wide variety of factors. So I don't think the commission's action on this case would set any new precedent that hasn't already been set previously.
Can I just comment on that?
Sure.
So this S-4 zoning district is just one small area of the mid-coast. Most of the mid-coast is S-1 or whatever it is. It's not S-1. It's...
This is S-94.
Most of them are 5,000 square feet. This neighborhood is 10,000 square feet. And there are many of these 4,400-square-foot substandard parcels that are undeveloped in this area. And it contrasts that to other non-conforming use permits that have come before this commission in my time here, where they were built out older neighborhoods, and it seemed a reasonable thing to do. This is different because these... There are many of these same-size parcels in West Miramar that have not been built out. So how will this proceed? And the comparison I'd like to make with the R1... No, I've got my numbers. With the 5,000-square-foot lots that we have, the setbacks there are a total of 15 feet with no smaller than five on one side. So that takes you down to, that's for 5,000-square-foot. And in the 5,000-square-foot area, significant... Let's see, what is it, significantly substandard? Is that the term? This 4,400-square-foot would not be considered substantially substandard in the rest of the mid-coast. And even though it is substantially substandard in this district with the 10,000. Okay, so in the, in the most of the mid-coast, this size lot would not, would not require a use permit. You would get 15 feet total. And just my point being that if most of the, if the mid-coast requires the minimum of 15-feet side setbacks total, why is this property... Why do they need more than that? Why should they be allowed? That doesn't seem to meet the findings to me. Why should they be allowed? That doesn't seem to meet the findings to me.
Yes, Dennis, you can correct me if I'm wrong. So just looking at the numbers, the minimum setbacks here are seven on each side, so fourteen feet.
So we're talking one foot here.
Right, we're talking one foot. I wanted to point that out. And then I don't know what the typical frontage or width of the lots, the five thousand square foot lot. This is forty feet as opposed to fifty feet. So I think most of the five thousands are fifty feet wide and this is forty feet wide.
So in the, whereas the standard is a five thousand square foot lot, substantially substandard is thirty-five hundred. So you see, the forty-four hundred is still not substantially substandard. They would still have the same side bit setbacks. They would just be able to build there. And this is my point, that if that standard is okay for most of the mid-coast, why would these houses need to be bigger and intrude more into the setback? That this seems like a good place to draw the line. I understand you're saying this is not precedent-setting, but there are many of these lots of this width, forty-foot wide. And that maybe, that it seemed to hold, I know I've been getting ahead of myself in the process here, but just you were explaining the issue and I, so it seems to me like to hold the line at fifteen feet might be appropriate. Otherwise, every house that comes forward saying, well, that one got fourteen feet, I need thirteen feet. Or, I mean, you know, since the, for consistency, like I say, in the mid-coast, most of the lots are smaller anyway and that's the standard. Okay, sorry.
Understood. And just thanks for recognizing where we are in the process here. So I think it'd be worth taking testimony from the applicant and anyone else from the public and then continuing the deliberations following that.
Thank you, Dennis. Would the applicant like to speak at this time? Please state your name and you have fifteen minutes.
My name is Zafar Fun. I'm the applicant and she's my wife.
I'm Bina Moyn, I'm his wife.
So let me get to this part right away. I have made ninety-three changes to the plan. The design review committee has made me do a lot of work and most of them was feedback on the colors, the setbacks, the design of the roof and everything. And all counted, there's ninety-three changes that we have made to address the privacy concerns, the palette concerns and all.
The color changes.
The color changes and everything. So I will address two things. One, let's talk about the setbacks for one second. So I totally get it and I know the precedent is fifteen. And the why I'm asking for one foot more is the way the two-car garage has been placed, because there's a requirement to have two-car garage. And my neighbor has a driveway where her, my seven-foot setback. So between my wall and the neighbor wall is almost twenty feet difference. And she has no windows except one small bathroom window right on the top. So I could go, you know, I could have designed something where I could have done ten and then five and I'll be very close to their house. But I said, let's just keep it in the middle and have a balanced approach so the person built right next to me will have the same setback, right? So that's why we went this route, because I saw how far their house is, because there's a twelve-foot of driveway between them and then seven-foot of mine and no windows on it. So that's why, and just to be fair with both sides, that's how I requested that. Second thing, that the privacy concern that a lot of people, the neighbor have talked about, it's on recording. On the second review where I was rejected by the design review committee, Katie, who was one of the design, she actually went back again and then she wanted to do a very thorough review of does my deck procure any privacy issues? And then she, on the third review, said, I went there, I spent more time, I looked at blind, there is no privacy concern because I started with almost double the size of deck. I keep on making smaller and smaller and smaller to this right right now. There are four people are standing, that'll be more than enough. And what I did, to even go further to be a good neighbor, I almost go four and a half feet of wall and then my roof goes go inside almost two feet. That means I have, here is the edge of the roof. I have to be two feet away from the edge of the roof because if you look at the design, the deck goes like this and the roof goes, basically, I'm opening a hole in the middle. So there is a this much and then there's a twenty feet, so you're talking about, and it's all the way to the front. So I have done all that stuff, make sure that I, you know, help the neighbor privacy concern and we did everything that possibly that we can. So on the setback, I get the precedent, but I think being fair to the neighbor, there is no lot I can, if I start making changes, it'll be unfair to the person next door. Tom Carey, I know Tom Carey very well and it'll be unfair for him because if he decided to build a house, he will see five feet on one side, which is not what I really want. So that's why I went there. So and then, just like I said, ninety-three changes, we went through a lot of changes, make sure that we looked at privacy concern. My palace, literally, the color palette, starting from darker to darker, to lighter to lighter now, it's like extremely light and I have a sample that I can show you. White and light grays. You talked about the reflective roof. All the roofs now that's metal roofs are building, I think that was an issue a lot of people have talked about. My, if I have my way, I literally went with the flat roof and I was denied twice that you cannot have a flat roof because they have to have a pitch. This is the minimum pitch that I did for pitch because I wanted to make, I want a flat roof, but you know, the designer said, no, you cannot have a flat roof. I said, I don't have a six pitch because that's going to be the reflective. It's literally almost to the flat, to the minimum that I have gone. So hopefully, I can, and I will make sure that I work with Steve and Dennis that, you know, the coating on the roofing is not reflective. We totally understand that. We want to make sure that it's not reflective. And because of the pitch, the shed roof, and I have a light gray color roof. So hopefully, that will take care of it. So if you want to say anything about the color palette and all those setbacks that we have talked about, there was a lot of, there was a lot of comments on it looks flat, the roof is, the walls are straight. My design is I have built so many corners so you don't see any big walls. I have gone inside, I have come out for the bookshelf, which is only one feet on the second floor. I have done a closet so I can break this big wall structure. So it looks like, if you look at the design on the house, you will see that it's all breaking up and that's why, you know, on the top floor, there is a ten-foot setback. If you remove that closet, it's thirteen foot on the second floor. And if you remove that one foot of bookshelf, which is only six feet wide, I still have eight-foot setback on the top floor. So I tried to do, and all the changes that you have seen that I have gone from, you know, small wall, bigger wall, breaking the wall, different palette was just to make sure that I meet the design review committee. And after the third iteration, they were very happy that we, you know, we did everything possibly what the neighbors wanted on the privacy concern, the color palette design, the design review requirements of don't give me flat walls, have morphades. We did all that stuff to come up with this design. And.
Yeah, I just wanted to say.
Like literally, we just burned out after the third one.
We both worked really hard on this. My husband was spending nights just to make sure everything works out. And this is our very personal, you know, dream that we are trying to make it happen.
We're in order to develop.
We're not developers or anything. It's just one house for us. But we really made sure that, you know, everybody is happy by the end of the third one. We were also tired, but we made sure that everything goes the same way it is supposed to. And just wanted to thank you all for listening to us. Thank you.
Any question for us?
Questions for the applicants? Commissioner Hansen?
Very creative. And so considering that your front door, you either have to go upstairs or downstairs. So my guess is you're using the garage as your entrance.
What I did is I have, my living area is on the second floor and I want to do gift this visualization that it's a big house, even though it's seventeen hundred square feet house. So you go five, six steps up, then you enter this door and then you go another four or five feet up. So you can have.
I get that. So, but the reality of day-to-day, where you've got your groceries and everything, you're actually making active use of your garage to get in? Is that how you really planned this?
So there will be entrance from the garage side and there is entrance on the side that we have gave access.
I'm just trying to figure this out. This is not a negative comment.
No, no, I'm just saying.
I'm just trying to.
No, I actually thought about.
It's so different.
Commissioner Hansen, I actually thought about, because we live, you know, we have two kids and we bring groceries and sometimes you call them up, they don't even picking up because they know their mom and dad are bringing groceries. So what we did is, yes, there will be entrance from the garage and then what we have done is we have given entrance from the side.
Because, you know, reality, every time I look at the garage, somebody submit, I say, how many boxes of storage can you get in there? Because you're going to park your car in the street. And I say, okay, if you do that, you're going up the steps to go down steps, you know, and I go, you almost have to make use of your garage and I'm going, okay, this is different. And I'm just trying to see how you thought about it.
I did actually thought about it, but you're right, you know, we do have to go a little bit up. But I think that the house we're trying to build is where people come in, they have a little bit of, we have no, we have no view of the sea because the neighbor house, it's a very block-shaped house and it's just, you know, a big structure, right? So when we look at outside, we don't see, we see this big wall of the neighbor. So what I was trying to do is when we sit upstairs, at least we can see the front of the house a little bit higher, pretending that we're in an open space. If we keep everything down, then we only see the backyard. So that's what I was trying to, that's where the thought process was working.
Thank you for helping me through it.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Was there, I forget who I heard this from. Was this from you to the planner about that reducing the width of the house by one foot would mean you couldn't fit two cars in the garage?
So I don't know, but.
Couldn't you instead just reduce the width of the front staircase?
I mean, if the commissions come back to me, I totally get the precedent part because I have read law too. And I can, if the commission thinks that it'll be helpful, we can go six inches from each side, so we keep the precedent to fifteen feet. So we can, it's not that end of the world, I know it's one feet, but I want to be fair with both side of the neighbors. I know Tom Carey because that's his ladder is right next door. So I can go six inches from this side and six inches and that gives us the fifteen feet, the precedent that's already been set on Coronado and we still remain on that side. So we could, if you say that we'll approve on this condition that you go six inches. And just keep in mind that we're talking about only part of the house, which is under seven feet. Rest is either ten, thirteen or eight.
Right, so you don't need to reduce a whole foot, the whole length of the house, just part of the house.
Right, so what we do in the front, we do six inches on this side, six inches this side and we are still, we're still at fifteen. So we can, we're very accommodated and we just want to.
The six inches part, I mean, basically, the standard in the rest of the mid-coast is fifteen feet total. Wherever you want to put it, but no side smaller than five.
So I can definitely, Commissioner Ketchum, if you guys insist you have to go do this thing, I can certainly go six inches of one side and six inches on one side. I can tell you that I worked with Dennis and Dennis was very strict on me, make sure that I meet the minimum requirement of the garage. And that was very, very difficult because basically I took a lot of living space to build a two-car garage. We live in a house which has a single car garage. So it is a dream to have a two-car garage. So that's why we have that. But I am certainly open, if you guys approve where I can go six inches on each side, to give you guys the precedent that you guys already have set on Coronado, on Hundred Fifty Coronado. So I can certainly do.
And you'd still have your two-car garage?
I will still have my two-car garage because I'm going six inches from there and six inches from this side and this way. Nobody's upset, nobody's, you know, we're okay on this side.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
That is a good proposition that you just had.
Okay.
Right.
I mean.
That would, yes, yes.
If you go talk to the design review committee, the changes that we have done, even they were said, okay, Zafar, you have done enough. I mean, it's on recording, you guys can listen on it. We have done ninety-three changes and we did this thing because we want to make sure that the neighbors feel comfortable. And literally, we had a very different design. If I show you the design, you said you were building this and you end up with this. Yeah, because that's what everybody feedback was coming in. We don't want to be too much, you know, upsetting neighbors. We want to be, we want to live there. And we want to make sure that, you know, we are accommodating to everything what we can, possibly what we can. So it's a small lot. It is hard, very hard to design, you know, a house in that width of the lot.
Thank you. I think, I think I really like that idea of yours.
Okay, thank you.
Any question?
Yeah, I have a clarification question for Steve. Steven, sorry. We're talking about seven feet on the right side and the left side. I got lost with the six-feet things that we're just asking to even reduce.
Yeah, so the issue has to do with setting a precedent whereby the two-side setbacks, when you add them together, would be less than fifteen feet. The current proposal at the most narrow points are seven feet on each side, so they're at fourteen. So the applicant has indicated his willingness to, if he takes each side that's got a seven-foot setback and move the wall in six inches, then he'll have seven and a half and seven and a half equals fifteen and he will be consistent with the fifteen-foot standard that's been applied elsewhere. And I just want to make sure too that we recognize the other speaker as well. So unless you have additional questions for the applicant, I think it's probably time to move to the other speakers.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Thank you. We have, please state your name and affiliation.
Hi, my name is Winnie Tong Pagasid. I'm actually attorney for Linda Schlop, which is, will be the neighbor, you know, right next adjacent to this lot. And I submitted my letter, which I believe all the commissioners have gotten. My client just wants to reiterate, you know, that she has concerns regarding the characteristics and the privacy, but her main concern at this hearing she wants to focus on is the setback. And as mentioned, and it's listed up there, the setback is actually ten-foot on each side. And I know we're talking about precedent, you know, in the other areas for fifteen total. But again, in this area, it's ten for a reason because like you said, there is many, many undeveloped lots that are close to, I guess, to five-foot, you know, a little less non-conforming. And I think Commissioner Santa Cruz mentioned about the last part of my paragraph in my letter and I said, the reason is if you build, you know, how the back setback is required twenty, sorry, the rear setback is required twenty and right now they actually have thirty-six. So they actually have a lot of room to build, you know, yes, a little bit longer and more narrow. However, that's the lot they purchased and that's the requirement. They could build almost the same exact square foot, you know, building if it was designed differently to fit all, you know. And if you look at the section in the zoning code, in section six one three three, it says, you know, that, I'm going to read it slowly. It's basically in the bottom of my first page of my letter. It says, "As required by section six five zero three, a use permit for development of a non-conforming parcel may only be issued upon making the following findings." And one of the findings, it says that it is, that the proposed development is as nearly and nearly was underlined not by me, but it's actually in the code section itself, "in conformance with the zoning regulation currently in effect as it is reasonably possible." And again, reasonably is underlined. And is it reasonable? It's possible. It's, he can build the exact same size project if it was actually presented or, you know, complying with. complying with the standards that's actually ten-foot side setbacks. That's what my letter was trying to say. It's basically if he actually proposed a different design with the same square footage, it would still work in this lot. We have never seen such a design. It was never proposed. I understand that there was many changes and I was at all those hearings at the, you know, review committee. But every, each time when it was brought up regarding the side setbacks, it was, it was mentioned to me that they don't decide the side setbacks issue, the commissioner does. So it was kind of deferred back to this, this, I want to say, hearing. So we, it was kind of tabled in the sense that, you know, they were looking at all the overall design characteristics, colors, look and feel. And I do agree and I admit that, you know, that the applicant has actually made a lot of changes from the initial design. My client has her opinion. She does not like, you know, she feels that the the look and feel obviously doesn't fit the neighborhood. In her mind, it's a coastal neighborhood, has the, you know, pastel color feel. She's entitled to her, her op- her opinion. And everyone's entitled to theirs. But like I said, on on this hearing today, we're focused on the seven-foot setback. And what we're trying to say is, based on what the zoning code says, is it reasonable? It's it's possible. Why is it not reasonable? It was never even explored yet. The design that would fit all the criterias. So in our, you know, what I'm trying to say is, I don't think it's reasonable to grant it when we haven't even seen the design, you know, they're saying that it won't work. But it might. We have never seen the one that actually complies with the required side setbacks. And it could easily comply because we know that there have room in the rear to comply with the square footage. Our client is obviously, you know, concerned about precedent. But he, she's also, you know, she's a landowner and this is gonna be right next to her. So I'm, I'm saying that, you know, it shouldn't, the side setbacks should not be, you know, the whole five and ten. I mean, because obviously, in her, on her point of view, yes, if you, they put it five on that side and ten on hers, she'd probably be happy. But she's probably happier if it's never done. Because like I said, there's many lots in the whole neighborhood. It will devalue the entire neighborhood once they're all developed. Then everything, it's gonna be close. You have five, you know, what if it's five next to another five? You know, so she doesn't think it should be fifteen. It should be what it is. It's ten-foot. It's, they can design it. It's not necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With permission of the chair, I'm available to respond to comments.
Shall we close?
I have one other speaker, but I believe there's no one else here, so.
So they they are not here. Okay. So in that case, we'll close the public hearing.
So move.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the last speaker is raising the issue of what is truly reasonable in these types of situations. And I think our zoning code speaks for itself in that it offers a non-conforming use permit in situations where we have non-conforming parcels. And a forty-foot wide, forty-foot wide parcel, if you take ten feet on each side, means a building envelope that would only be twenty feet wide, which is a significant constraint. And throughout the various non-conforming use permits that this commission has reviewed, you have acknowledged that reducing the width of a, a building to twenty feet along its entire length would not be a reasonable thing. So we have accommodated reductions and setbacks, given the need to accommodate a, a building that can be enjoyed and lived in, given the narrow nature of the lot. So we believe that the recommendation here is for a reasonable home. And I'd also say that I think, you know, the decision regarding setbacks cannot be completely separate from questions of design. So when it comes to matters of ensuring compliance with the entirety of the regulations that were given, the design review is kind of at the top, right? We want to make sure that the designs are both suitable for the neighborhood, compliant with the neighborhood, and well-thought-out designs. And I think the design review committee took that issue seriously. And although, you know, they are not the final decision-maker on the setbacks, the way the structure is massed and placed on the site is part of the design. And I feel confident that the positive recommendation from the design review committee reflects the fact that this is a reasonable, well-thought-out design.
Thank you, Steve. Should we open?
Yeah.
You have any questions for Steve?
I don't have, no, I actually, he just touched on what I was gonna say. I think that, I don't think we're setting a precedence here. I think we've seen a number of this issues come before us before. And for substandard lots, I think it's on a first-come, first-served basis and would look at the, you know, the the actual facts of each individual case. I think what comes to mind is the reasonable enjoyment of the land that people possess. And I think in in this case, I really don't have a problem of having to reduce any farther. And I I give, you know, the design review committee, I I always look at what they have to say and see, you know, if they've covered all the bases. And I think, as you mentioned, you've already gone through a severe process of having to make a lot of adjustments. So with that, I'm gonna say that I think this is a good project based on everything that has happened here. So that's my opinion.
Commissioner Hansen?
I'm actually in agreement with that. I mean, if I had a bias, and I do have a bias, I would never build another house in the coast side. Let's just be honest. If it ever came to, we could present this, I'd be the first saying, yes. But I'm not using, I have never, I, in my mind, I've never used codes and regulations to stop it. I I want to deal the issue head-on. So with that, I I do have comments. First, I do have a metal roof in my place in Truckee. The house was built in eighty-nine. And I have, I would say sixty percent of my neighborhood has metal roofs. Now, some are shiny, some are rusted. Mine isn't. And dealing with that, I've learned that most of those metal roofs are anodized aluminum. You get a good quality roof, it will last thirty years easy, which is what you could expect, I think, out of any roof. Get, get a cheap one and you will have problems. You know, you could have rust, you could have whatever, you know, so that's just something to keep in mind. Also, roofs, those roofs oxidize. I had a, I've had an addition, I've added a garage ten years ago. The two colors don't line up, even though the same manufacturer, same color, same everything, you know. One's a little brighter than the other. They oxidize and become less reflective. You have the minimum amount of pitch. I don't think your pitch reflects on any uphill neighborhood. You know, from the way I'm visualizing it, you know, if I went out there again, I could confirm it in my head. But I, I may be misoriented, but I don't think it does. I don't think it provides a hazard to planes coming in for a landing or anything like that. Okay. Side setbacks. I always have a comment on side setbacks because I always try to figure what the intent was. What is the intent? And of course, I have yet to get a satisfactory answer, other than my own research, which doesn't make it true, other than what I can find, you know. A lot of the side setbacks really were set back in the thirties. Mine is a fifty-foot wide lot and I have two five-foot side setbacks, of which is just, I think, about the minimum amount to get back and forth in safety in case of fire or access to the garage and stuff like that. For the most part, that stayed that way up until post-World War Two, when the side setbacks got wider. And I, and I, okay, why did we do it for wider? And that's been my really thing. So I I have never found a definitive answer to that question. But I have found, what I think, a derivative answers to that question. That was during a period of ranch-style homes, of where there was an open-air concept. They talked about open-air concepts and space between homes as a design element. We were thinking of one-story ranch-style houses, sitting on a prairie by itself. And this is how we visualized it. That's great for the nineteen forties, nineteen fifties. Privacy issues. My side window in my living room looks into my neighbor's bedroom. My bedroom side window looks into my neighbor's bathroom. Okay, that's not nineteen thirty-seven, normal. Okay, we deal with it. All right. We don't build houses that way. Houses, the windows are staggered, this and that. That's not, I don't see where your windows are, where the neighbor windows are, provide a privacy issues. So I don't see why a setback issue is for privacy is a matter. Oh, and one thing I did forget about is the nineteen fifties, another reason they talked about, like I said, derivative is noise because people were putting air conditioners in their windows. You know, if you had an air conditioning running, you want distance. No one does that anymore, particularly out here. Of course, you live in an area, having an air conditioning is probably still a future event as opposed to a reality.
Madam Chair, I am so sorry to interrupt. I have a personal conflict that I need to attend to at twelve-thirty. I did not anticipate that the meeting would run so quickly.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. I I'm so sorry.
No, I I just wish I knew ahead of time. I'm just saying, I find no reason to make any changes.
Any other comments? Commissioner, Commissioner Ketchum?
So I was at the CDRC meeting and brought up the issue of setbacks because there was something on the design that was inaccurate. And CDRC can't say the set, they can't say what the setback has to be. That's not in their purview. So they're just stuck with adjusting the design. And now we're here and we have the opportunity to say whether we can make the findings for this. And so basically you have, in most of the midcoast, a forty-foot wide lot would not be allowed anything less than the fifteen-foot total side setbacks. And in this district, I I don't think we should allow anything less than fifteen feet. There are many empty parcels that this will come up. And if we draw the line there, I think that is best for the midcoast. I don't think you can make the findings that, that it is nearly in conformance with zoning as reasonably possible because we've seen this in the rest of the midcoast, that they can do it. It's a forty, fifteen from forty is twenty-five feet. And I do think it sets a precedent, so me personally, I I can't make the findings.
Okay, I have a proposed staff recommendation, if I may. Why don't we just like, and it may be legally, Tim may correct this, but we could say, approve the non-conforming use permit, coastal development permit and design review permit based on and subject to the required funding and condition of approval indicated in the staff report with the, with the addition correction of a seven-point-five. Can we do that?
I I think what you're suggesting is a motion under which you recommend approval. But add an additional condition to the approval, which will require revised plans that achieve total side setbacks of fifteen feet. So I, is that a motion that you're putting on the table?
That's a motion that I put on the table. It will be a total of fifteen. With that, I'm, I'm willing to propose that.
So the, the condition of approval would be reduced the width of the house by one foot, such that total side setbacks equal a minimum of fifteen feet?
Correct.
Yep. Yep.
Six inches from.
Either way you want, any way you want to do it, fifteen.
I'm going to second that motion.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So the motion is carried with the additional condition that minimum side setbacks would be fifteen feet.
No, seven, seven-point-five on either side, total of fifteen.
Seven-point-five on either side, total of fifteen.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, thank you.
So forgive me for just running through real quickly the rest of the agenda. I I don't have any additional correspondence to report to you beyond what we discussed today. So no study session for the next meeting. The two items that unfortunately got postponed from this meeting will be heard as well as an additional permit for a new single-family residence and accessory structure at one-four-five-five Audubon in Montero. And then as far as my director's report goes, a couple of things happened at the board meeting yesterday. The San Mateo County Board of Supervisors meeting, they discussed the building code and the reach code, which Chairman Gupta you had asked about. And so there's some news on that today you might be interested in. If you have questions about it, feel free to contact me. The board also adopted an ordinance restricting advertising of cannabis and alcohol within certain proximities of sensitive receptors. And then they affirmed the planning commission's approval of the single-family residence on Skyline Avenue that had been appealed to them. I then went to the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors meeting to testify on the Stanford matter. And I'm sure you'll see some reports on that in the news today. Feel free to follow up with me with questions. And then finally, I wanted to get back to Commissioner Ketchum regarding the Highway ninety-two signs. My enforcement team is out there today doing a full assessment of the signs that have been installed. And we will be addressing both the temporary signs as well as the permanent signs as follow-up. As far as the temporary signs go, we are going to wait until the Halloween holiday is over and then make sure that they're removed on a prompt basis. And we'll also address any signs that remain in terms of whether or not they're appropriately designed and permitted. So that concludes my report. And if it's okay with you, I will let Tim answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. The commissioners?
Do you have any estimate on one RV park, connect the coast side, the year, the rest of the year, just generally?
Sure.
What we can expect?
Yes. We were hoping to get the RV park on the first meeting in November. I don't think the planner's gonna have enough time to complete that and respond to all the comments received. I will not be at the following commission meeting. And I'm not sure I want to have that item on if I can't be present because I think it raises significant issues. But I know the applicant has been expecting a November hearing, so it's kind of in the air. If it doesn't happen at the second meeting in November, it would likely happen at the first meeting in December. As far as connect the coast side goes, Joe's been working real hard to respond to all the comments received. We had hoped that we'd be in front of the commission with the information item in November. And I think that's still a possibility, but I need to go back and confirm with him. If we do, it will be at the second meeting in November. If not, we'll have it at the first meeting in December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So if commissioners do not have any comments, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.